The time is 6:00 PM and the regular board meeting of Lebanon City Schools Board of Education will now come to order. Will you all stand and join me with the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Irvin, roll call, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Present.
Mr. Gliotti?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mrs. Cope?
Here.
Section four of the agenda, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections on tonight's agenda? Hearing nine, roll. Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section five, communications report. We do have one person signed up to speak this evening. The hearing of our public will now open the floor for public comments. Any resident of Lebanon City Schools District having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may participate during the public portion of the meeting. All statements are limited to five minutes per person or thirty minutes in total and shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate our participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, repetitive, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. And Ms. Langdon, if you want to take the microphone and just state your name and your relationship to the district, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Langdon and I am a citizen in the district. Do you need my address also?
No, we have it.
Good evening. A month ago, I stood on this exact place and spoke about the ongoing bullying and harassment that my family has experienced over the last few years in the district. As of today, not one person has reached out to investigate the matter or to learn more about why my children do not feel safe attending school here after being here since kindergarten. I question why? Is it laziness? Is it simply you just don't care? What is the reason that you continue to ignore these reports of bullying and do nothing? Until last month, most of the school board members had never even heard my voice. My emails were ignored. My request for a meeting was also ignored. Literally the only way I could get any of you to even hear me is to take my five minutes at a school board meeting. And based on the lack of response, I'm not even sure any of you actually listened to what I had to say. I attend church with one of you. I've seen you at Mass. But I can't even be treated as a human being and get a few minutes of your time. When this all began for my family in February of 2023, the continued theme for why the school board would investigate the circumstances further were that we quote "trust our administration." While I can appreciate that you trust the administration, your job as elective officials is to manage the administration. The very first thing I learned as a professional manager is that you're not able to really have personal relationships with staff. As a manager, I cared about the people that worked for me, but my relationship was nothing more than employee-manager. I know from personal experience it would be nearly impossible to effectively manage one of my friends. During the last school board meeting, Mr. Lane and Ms. Severs were discussing how they were planning to go to the girls' softball game together. There were many times that I observed them together at school events seemingly interacting as friends. I know that their kids are on the same summer baseball team, not affiliated with Lebanon, and I know as a parent of a summer baseball student, there's lots of options for summer baseball. What this means is that relationship goes beyond board and superintendent. And my concern is, is this relationship interfering with his ability to perform the duties as an elected official? According to the Ohio Ethics Toolkit for Public School Districts, Exodus Law indicates that Ohioans deserve public servants who advance the public interest rather than their personal interest, or those of closely related parties. A public official has a conflict of interest when his or her ability to be an objective decision-maker could be impaired by his or her own interests or the interests of family members. Are the personal relationships the reason why the board doesn't care to investigate serious allegations such as bullying further? I really don't know, but the circumstances lead me to believe that might be the case. Since the last school board meeting, I've been fortunate to connect with families from Ms. Severs's previous school district. One connection I made said, "I'm not surprised you're having an issue with him." He was arrogant and we were glad to see him go. Another person stated that they moved to the district after he left, but they hadn't heard great things.
Ms. Langdon, again, personal attacks, please.
I've also connected with several individuals from Lebanon, a mix of staff members and families. They thank me for being a voice for those who can't due to fears of retaliation. I will not quote specifically from those individuals. I want to protect their privacy, but here are the statements I've been told. Someone observed the superintendent yelling at a teacher. A former staff member said they left the district because they knew that they would never protect her when they asked specific questions regarding how to handle a student and keep them safe. Another current employee says they feel stuck because leaving the district would require them to take a pay cut and they can't afford to do that. I've been encouraged to continue to advocate because they desperately need a change. I've had another person tell me that I hope that I'm heard and that they wish the school board would hear the parents and address these major issues. Another parent said, "My child shouldn't be going to school in fear. So much change needs to happen in this district." One parent said, "The teachers in the district are frequent tasking, but it's concerning how much slides buy out of fear of backlash." One parent said, "We chose Lebanon for the school district, but it has been a huge letdown." Another person told me, "I can see if you were to get on his bad side, that he would make your life miserable." I've also paid close attention to comments on social media. I don't have time to read them today, but at some point I will. However, the status comment is, "We've lost several students to suicide because of the bullying in the past four to five years. It's a horrible school district and they do nothing." While seeing others have had a similar experience from the district and administration is validating because at some point I felt crazy, but it's also extremely disappointing and it's actually embarrassing. Knowing that there are children, teachers, and staff being bullied in this district literally keeps me up at night.
Ms. Langdon, I'm sorry, but you hit your five minutes. Moving on, item B, superintendent report. Mr. Severs, update on child nutrition?
Yeah, so I asked our food service department and child nutrition department to share with us just an update from the year and how things are going. We've made some significant changes in student nutrition and we just wanted to share a little bit about that. So you'll see the gray bar is the previous school year, the red bar, the maroon bar in this is the previous school year. These are breakfast served. I don't need to go through all the numbers, but we've increased participation in all of our buildings in terms of breakfast participation. High school has always been an issue in terms of breakfast. A, it's early. B, high school kids aren't going to breakfast and things as much in the buildings. A lot more of that is grab and go instead of a meal that would show up here. And so that's breakfast. Lunch participation, you see the major increases. Actually, a major increase actually happened at the high school, which is, I mean, it was the lowest performing or the second lowest in terms of the number of meals sold previous year. And this year, the increase of 29,000 lunches served more at the high school is significant. 29,000 total, 25 at the high school itself. So participation is up. A lot of that has to do with the options that we're providing. A lot of that has to do with how we've organized the cafeteria and, you know, a lot more reimbursable meals, which means we're getting more money back from the federal government as well then, if it's a full meal. At the high school, they introduced vending machines. The students could use their school lunch account to get things out of the vending machines. These are all complying with the school lunch and nutrition standards as well. So that's all the revenue there from the vending machines at Lebanon High School starting in January. We had some hiccups early on with that, but that was a pretty small group of people in terms of making sure that those, you know, PIN numbers and things were connected to the kids actually buying from the machines. But it's been a huge increase. Kids being able to grab things and go quickly in the morning or after school. We've also increased the number of adults buying meals. It's at a different rate than the students, but we've offered a lot more healthy options and, you know, adult chef salads and wraps and things. So staff members being able to buy food from the cafeterias, you see that increase. Federal reimbursement is increased, so we get federal reimbursement for school meals as long as it's a complete meal, fruit, vegetable, milk, and an entree. And so we saw an increase there of $104,000 in the last year. And just several things to kind of think about there. The upper right picture was actually at the Hall of Fame reception. They catered that through the food service department. They're looking to do a lot more of those types of things going forward as well. And just some of the highlights from the school year. So I am, I mean, we're extremely thankful for the work Megan and her staff. And the child nutrition department has been phenomenal. The lower right-hand corner there, the conveyor belt with the, what looks like pizzas, that's the pizza oven at Lebanon High School, which is a new thing that we have this year. And there's been a ton of participation with that. And then there's also the salad bar offering there as well. One of the things that was a huge shift this year was as early as like, I think Bowman even, kids serving their own fruits and vegetables. And so instead of putting things in cups and kids taking them, if they like peas, they get to take some more peas than they would have there. So they're getting to choose some of those. It's increased a lot of the fruit and vegetable consumption. Also decreased waste because we're not putting things on kids' trays they don't want to eat. So it's been a really beneficial improvement and change in our school nutrition department. The other thing, just to point out, we've talked about this before, but Megan Grippa, she was the state, she was recognized as the child nutrition, you know, top one in the state. She now qualifies to go onto a national, onto the nationals as well. And so it's really good recognition for her, but also for the district. And a lot of that has to do with the improvements in the department and the changes that are being made there. So just annually, want to try to update when I can on these things. This is a full, is it enterprise account? Is that right, Karen? So basically, any money made through food service goes back into food service. So the employees are paid for out of this, the improvements to the kitchens. So they're looking to expand. We need to update some equipment. And so as that does well, then we don't have to pay for new pieces of equipment out of general fund or out of permanent improvement. That fund can help sustain the improvements and the repairs and replacements necessary in our kitchens. So the better it does, the better we are able to make changes and things going forward. So just wanted to give that update. Annually try to let the board know where we are with some of those things. Any questions? Thanks.
Moving on to item C, board committee reports, and we will start with Ms. Dalton.
Yes, I don't have anything for this month.
I think we're gonna hear that a lot, aren't we? Mr. Gliotti, CAT committee, please.
I'm gonna echo that. Also, our next meeting is scheduled for August.
Our legislative liaison, Ms. Cope?
So I thought I had nothing. And then today, I was telling Mr. Lane, I've been watching all day long, to just try to have the most recent update. Today, the House voted 61 to 28 to override Governor Dewine's veto of item number 66 that was in his bill. This restricts political subdivisions, including school districts, from pursuing replacement property tax levies, as well as fix some emergency, substitute emergency, and combine school district income tax, fix some property taxes. So that, they did override that today. There are two more items that they are looking to override, but that was not voted on today. So that is the most recent, this has to go to the Senate, so this is not a final thing. It has to go to the Senate. So at this point, today was the day that they came back to vote on these things. I would imagine things will start back up again within the next couple of days. Apparently, they have till December 31st to get through all of these, the line item vetoes. That's all I have.
They did not, they did not even bring the other two to the floor today. And the impact for us in terms of that vote would be, we have the emergency levies that became substitute levy several years ago. They were on a 10-year term. So when that expires, if that gets passed by the Senate, when that substitute levy would expire in seven years from now, seven or eight years, whatever that would be, we would not be allowed to go back with a substitute. We would have to have some other way of generating that type of levy. They did not touch the 20 mil floor or the other things that were in there that would have had a more kind of immediate impact for us. Is that fair?
So if you can't do, what kind of levy are these? It's a whole new levy then?
No, they want to basically, what my understanding is, is they want everything to be just the bond, be the, just the bond, like general, like a, what's the word I'm looking for? So they don't want fix some levy, so like, an emergency levy is for a fixed sum amount, fixed dollar amount. They want to have millage and levies that are like that.
But the substitute levy allowed for new homeowners.
Substitute allowed for the new homeowners' growth.
So the current residents will no longer get the benefit of new build.
That was a question we asked of Matt Nolan, actually.
Yeah, I think it's, you're, we're going back to the ballot for new money each time.
Right.
That conversation, substitute, where you capture, our current residents don't have to have any adds. That isn't a thing anymore. It's all brand-new money.
What was meant to be a property tax, for property tax relief? It is my understanding that what was passed today will provide zero property tax relief for, for taxpayers. All it does is mean that certain types of levies are no longer allowable in Ohio. Doesn't touch current levies that are approved. And so what was done today will not provide tax, tax, property tax relief for residents of Ohio in an immediate fashion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Severs. Warren County Career Center, Mr. Lane?
We have no July meetings, so no update for me.
No update, okay. I need a motion to approve Section 6, the minutes from our special meeting held at 7:00 a.m. on July the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections or complaints about start time of said meeting?
Hearing none. Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. Lane?
Since I was out of town, I will abstain.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Having been out of town, shouldn't you have abstained from suggesting 7:00 a.m. is the meeting time?
Anything that makes you happy at 7:00 a.m., I will vote for.
Okay, just, just checking.
I don't remember that that was my idea at this time.
Wait, I was going to say, may I say, I was all in favor of 7:00 a.m.
Yeah, I know. I'm well aware.
Sort of liked it myself.
Yeah, I know.
Can we put an item on the agenda to make those a permanent start time?
You guys are so lovely. Section 7, I have a motion to approve the financial consent items A through I, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Irvin, the floor is yours.
Okay. So we have finished fiscal year. So just a reminder, this is our current forecast, last updated in May. Just a side note here, one of the things that did pass in the budget bill, we haven't heard much about it, but one of the things that did pass was they've changed the five-year forecast, it is now going to be a three-year forecast and the dates will be a little bit different. So I'll keep you posted as I learn more about that, but that is a thing. So this will be looking a lot different than what you've seen historically. But currently today, this is where we're sitting. So again, green box is where we just ended. We are now officially in July into the 2026 projected. So everything I'm going to show you today is how did we compare to what we were thinking we were going to do for fiscal year '25. So the next slide, again, just a reminder of the picture of what we were doing, we were going to overspend this year by a little bit. Next year, we were going to underspend, so we were going to get more revenues than we spent and then go back into that overspend trend. So again, this, this last year was the first year in quite a few years that we had had more expenses than revenue coming in to carry that or to cover that. We're thinking as of May, our, we would need new money in some form or fashion in fiscal year 2028. So that's school year '27, '28. So that's kind of where we landed with our forecast. Looking at, I'm going to go to the next one. Looking at the actual cash balance and where we landed, we were actually, it was surprising to me, we were a little bit off. So we had a 30-day window there of changes. We anticipated 119 days. What we actually ended with was 106. It's not that big. That's not a lot, but it's still very surprising to me because it's a 30-day window. So every time I say to you, the forecast is a piece of paper, you never know what's going to happen because of the things going on. This is another indicator that that is true. And we'll talk through what actually happened here. So looking at 12 months, obviously, you would be at 100% of your budget on both revenues and expense side. We received about 101% of our revenues that we thought we were going to receive. So very small variance there. It ended up, the actual dollar figure was about 522,000. So of the millions of dollars that we got, not a huge amount, but it was still a variance. On the expense side, we saw about 102%. Again, not a huge variance, we're talking about a 2% there. Dollar value, about 1.6 million. The majority of the expense side was payroll expenses, which as you know, is our primary cost driver, and purchase services, which all year long I've been saying, these keep fluctuating up and down, but at the end of the day, our kids are needing more services and it's costing us more money. So nothing surprising here, this is what we expected, but also still a little bit of a variance there. On the revenue side, the, the primary driver of this one was, I know you're not going to be surprised, but economic development. So just, there's a lot happening in Lebanon and so we're getting the, the revenues from those agreements and we just got more than we anticipated getting. So there were more, more growth points there. So this goes in, in a very specific fashion, property taxes, homestead rollback. From last year to this year, we saw about a $5 million increase. So this accounts for all of the new homes that have come in, this accounts for the change to the substitute. I hope, hopefully this year, I, I would like to reach out to the county and see if they can isolate what that substitute did for us. Can you now see that? Because that data's now there. So I'm hoping to get you a number there. But also, also just the growth, which we, we have recognized in Lebanon, folks are paying more in property taxes, right? And so we saw that about $5 million increase. As a point of reference, last year I showed you the same chart. We saw about a $1.5 million increase. Two years prior to that was 2.4. So we're on, every three years, the county does a reappraisal, reevaluates what properties are worth. Those are really big drivers of this difference, this increase as well. The state funding, very little when you talk about, did it increase or decrease? So about 268,000. In our world, that's very small dollar value. And as you, you've heard the conversations, right? As our property tax wealth increases, our state funding formula decreases. We are on the guarantee, so that's not changing. The bulk of what this is coming from is our transportation changes. So we, we instituted some changes that got us better ratings, basically, better risk ratings. Those were great. And then they increased the actual formula for, specifically for transportation. So that's the bulk of what you see there. And then other revenue is what I talked to you about, which is really driving our, the difference in the projection versus what actually came in, and that's our economic development agreements. On the expense side, so again, wages and benefits, that's our biggest, our biggest factor here. We have over 700 employees. When you talk about just wages alone and then you add on benefits, it's a very large dollar value. So we saw about a $4.2 million increase from last year to this year. Again, giving you some perspective here, last year was about 2.1 million, the year before that was about 4.4. So right in line with what we've seen in previous years, it's, it's a large cost, so it's going to be the largest increase. Purchase services this year increased about 1.2 million. Again, that, it's that conversation we keep having, the increased costs of the need of our students. It's something we have to provide, but it is increasing in costs. Giving you a little bit of perspective here, last year it was 1.6. So not as high as last year, but still pretty significant. The materials and supplies, pretty nominal, capital, very nominal. Other expenses decreased. This is pro, last year there was no change. This is predominantly related to those advances that are finally straggling, those are gone now.
One thing I just want to point out on the purchase service line is, you know, if we have a student that does, is not able to attend the traditional school and we have to send them, you know, to a private school, a, a private placement someplace, those costs for one kid are in the neighborhood of 70 and 80,000 annually for a kid to be educated by some of these out, outplaced facilities. And so as that happens, we've seen more and more of those students need that, but also the demand for those has gone up all over the region. And so those providers are increasing the cost of that astronomically. And so we've seen a big increase in what, not necessarily always that we're sending more students to them, but what they're able to charge because the need is there, is, is gone up significantly. So.
To that point, I think they're having some of the same issues we are with staffing because I hear a lot of that staffing is rolling over for them too, so.
Karen, before you leave this page, out of the 4.2 wages and benefits, how much of that is the insurance co-pay or are part of the insurance?
So we had a really good renewal rate this year. I can't give you a dollar figure, I can get, I can get that for you. I would say the majority of this would be on the wages side. We had a really great renewal this last year on insurance. With that being said, I can't give final numbers yet, but it's not looking quite as good this year. And that's across the state as well. So most of this is just straight wages, trying to get us in line with area districts. You think about the transportations where we've had to realign, most of that is what you're seeing here.
One other question, will there be a transfer of funds from the purchase services when we bring, what, like 26 students or something in-house? Or will we, will that like help us or will it cost us in a different section of the budget?
Our current projections show it will save us money. There's, there's really no transfer. It is, instead of budgeting in purchase services, we're going to budget in wages and supplies. Okay. So instead of outsourcing, we're just carrying the cost in.
The cost for those students to attend the alternative school was, I think, between 14 and 16,000 per pupil to attend that. So bring, but obviously, we had to add, you know, a teacher, two teachers and a, and an aide to help oversee that program. So it will move out of purchase service. You will see purchase service go down, hopefully by several hundred thousand dollars, but that will be budgeted then out of salaries. So right now, it is a cost savings to the district to open the Drake Passage at Lebanon High School compared to sending them to the Warren County Alternative School.
Okay.
It will be a savings unless something changes, but that's, right now, it's, that's the plan, so.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the next slide, we're looking at cash balances here and just showing you prior year, so last year I just gave you the fiscal year '24 line. I thought it was interesting to look, again, tracking back to that forecast, what, what are we seeing here? So from a cash perspective, last year we decreased about 2.4 million. This year, we decreased about 1.2 million. So, a, and if you remember, last year we had also advanced, the general fund had advanced some money for our Phase 1 projects over here on the stadium. We are still working to pay those back. So right now, we've got about 500,000 that's still to be paid back here. That absolutely impacts that cash line. But this year, we saw a 1.2 decrease in cash. Now, looking at the next slide, it shows you, what did we anticipate? We only anticipated about 170,000 decrease. So that's a little bit different than what we anticipated. So I would like to go back and see, is there anything we can identify that can shore up the forecast a little bit? But also understanding, we're talking about 1 million on a 60, 70 million dollar budget, right? So it's not actually substantial, but for me, for us, for our comfort level, I would like to see, what does that do to this May forecast now that we have actuals? Does that do anything to us on those years out? I don't think it will, but I'd like to, to take a look just in case. Any questions?
Questions, comments? All right. Moving on to Item B is a list of monthly reports. C is your amended appropriations, all which should be in your board packets. D is the amended certificate of estimated resources. Karen or Isaac, if you need to jump in to, please feel free. E is a fund transfer.
So I'll, I'll explain this one, it's only $25. But just so you're aware, we used to have a summer school program before my time here and at, when seniors come to graduate, we have an influx of people trying to pay off old fees, student fees. This was one of them. It just triggered back up. We don't even have that fund anymore, so we had to open it to collect the money and now we're transferring it back into the general fund because we don't have that program anymore.
F is going to be a list of donations and we greatly appreciate those. G are three advances. Karen, do you want to, Ms. Irvin, do you want to comment on those?
Yeah, so this, if you remember, last month I came to you and asked to, for you to approve any advance that we needed at the end of the year to make our funds positive. You guys approved that and I said I would come to you with the actual dollar figures this month. So that's what this is.
H, approve the creation of the new state capital grant fund and the new federal capital grant fund.
So this one, the state of Ohio, the education, ODU, the Department of Educational Workforce, came together with the state auditor's office and they did a big project updating all of the schools' accounting codes. The auditor of state's office dictates all of our accounting codes and it hasn't been updated for years. So they came together, did a big project and we're still working through a lot of those changes, but two of the things that they requested that we do is any grant that we get that has a capital component. So think of your safety grants. Mr. Butler's been very fortunate to get several of those, very, very large dollar figure grants for capital items. They want us to separate those from a grant fund and make it a capital fund. That's literally what this is doing. There's no budget here yet because we don't know if we'll even get grants, but I need the, the funds in case we do. So if we do get a grant, if Mr. Butler is awarded another safety grant, it would go through here instead of the grant fund.
I is a then and now, and it looks like that's all Bureau of Workers' compensation, which is always fun. Any questions, comments, concerns about Section 7, Items A through I?
I did have one question I've had to ask earlier. The federal funds for special education, have they been released yet?
Not that I'm aware of. I have not seen anything come through.
Ms. Irvin, roll call, please.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section 8, public records request. The board does acknowledge the receipt of the public records request has been provided to you in your board packets. Section 9, may I have a motion to approve the final reading of policies PO 5460, PO 1,000, PO 3,000 and PO 4,000, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Severs, any?
I don't have anything to add unless there's specific questions about them from last month.
Yep.
Discussion.
Yep. We're all solid, good. All right. Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section 10, other educational consent items, may I have a motion to approve consent items A, B and C, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A is just updates on some student handbooks. B is approval of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year calendar. Mr. Severs, do you want to comment on that or?
I mean, I, we have a committee that meets annually made up of employees that we look at our calendar options compared to those in the county. We had like fourteen sort of different calendar configurations that were recommended. A lot of them were very similar. We put it out for a vote within the committee, and then recently, put the top three choices out to a vote within, for the staff to consider. The one that was recommended is consistent with the majority of schools in Warren County and was the top vote getter for the staff members in terms of that. This is my least favorite, well, I will say, it's my second least favorite thing to do that I have in my job is to come up with the school calendar because nobody's ever happy about it. But, I mean, it's, there are downfalls and benefits of every option presented. If there are any specific questions, comments, concerns, I will try to answer those, but it was a very lengthy process to get to this point. We try to be as consistent as possible with other Warren County schools. Part of the reason for that is it, it is more costly for us when we do not start in a similar timeline or we have school when others are not in school or vice versa. So, for example, this year, we started later than the rest of Warren County by several days. We have a lot of students that attend the Career Center, ESC programs, and other places that we're transporting kids to that we still have to transport even if our school doesn't start. So, we were paying bus drivers an additional, additional days of work in compensation to drive on those days. If the, if the non-public schools that we transport to are in session and we're not, then we have to, then we have to pay our employees to drive to them. So, trying to be as consistent as possible is what we try to do here, but, yeah. So, if there's any comments, questions, whatever, I can answer those.
Yeah, so I do. I, I'm not a fan. I've said it since I've been on the board that we just keep creeping up early into August. I'd be honest, I'm not going to vote for this because I look at this and we're at the fourteenth. I see days, we've got a full week at Thanksgiving now. We've got the Friday before spring break on here as a day off now. I, I, I'm going to vote no. I don't like how early we start. I don't like that we, we need a week at Thanksgiving. We need six days for spring break. Yeah, I'm not a fan. So, I guess you already know my vote on this one.
That's right.
But so, we probably need to break out A, B, and C because I will not be voting no on the other two items.
Okay.
I, I will say this, and I, I have zero comment or rebuttal for Thanksgiving, all right? We are the only school in the county this year that did not take a full week at Thanksgiving. Everybody else did. That's here nor there, right? I, I don't have a whole lot of opinions about things, so I keep them to myself, but I will say, on that calendar, the reason that Friday before spring break is off is because that is Good Friday in the, in, in the calendar.
I think the twenty-sixth.
And so, the, it's, in one of our bargaining units, one of our teachers, well, not our teachers, but one of our employee units has half-day as a holiday on Good Friday. It was negotiated a long time ago, and so, we typically try to not have school on Good Friday because then we would have to pay them holiday pay if we made them come to work.
Yeah, so that, that one makes sense to me. I, I searched Good Friday twenty-six when I looked that up, so I, I was a year off.
So, that's, I will, I will answer, I will not argue with you on Thanksgiving, but I will say that that's the reason the Friday before spring break is on the calendar.
And this year, this August, they are starting later. Like you said, Warren County.
Last year and this year.
Yeah, starting later, and the rest of Warren County started earlier.
This past year.
And this year also, they're starting.
So, what are the other districts in the county?
They're starting about a week later than everyone else.
Earlier?
Lebanon City is starting about a week later than all the other districts in Warren County.
This upcoming year.
Correct.
Yes.
And last year both.
But they're going after Memorial Day, which I think when you're looking at attendance, you have to look at when students actually come to school.
Yep.
And those are times when, like Thanksgiving, people traditionally travel, so if you have those as count as attendance days, you're going to have a lot of people not there. Or after Memorial Day, like this year, I can just, I know from some personal things that a lot of kids just chose not to come the week after Memorial Day because they vacation that week. So, I think as you're looking as a district at how you get the best attendance rate for your students, you have to look at when they're most likely to, we're not like we used to be where everybody comes to school just because you do. Now, people don't always feel it necessary to come every day, so you kind of have to adjust the calendar to that. Another thing to think about as you're looking at some of these, I think for teachers and students, it allows them some bit of a, kind of a mental break when you have some of these longer weekends and some of these times in there. Is it necessary? No, but I think if it's possible to get it into the calendar, I think it's, it's a positive for families and for students and teachers alike.
I, I mean, I, I will say that this is year, I'm heading into year thirteen as a superintendent, and the calendar has consistently crept earlier and earlier in August, and the reason for that primarily that schools have shifted to that is, first of all, the feeling of not wanting to go to school after Memorial Day. It is, that is a real thing. I don't, again, I don't understand it, but that's a real thing. The second thing is trying to get as many instructional days in prior to state testing windows. That's why it started. It's just continued to creep. And we, we discuss this at, at length in our calendar committee annually, and there are people that want to start after Labor Day and be done before Memorial Day because that's what they said they did when they were in school. And we also, if you go back and look, you didn't have long Christmas breaks, you didn't have long, we have to have X number of days of school. That's where we are, so how the calendar works. So, we're either choosing to have breaks in the middle of the school year and start early and go later, or we can start late and, and finish before Memorial Day. Just know that you're not going to get two full weeks at Christmas and, and different things like that. So, again, it is my second least favorite thing that I do in my job. I won't tell you what my first least favorite thing is, but I understand your concerns, Mr. Lane, and we presented calendars initially that started later, that had fewer breaks, and we also presented calendars that had, you know, the traditional three days of Thanksgiving break. This was the one, in the way that our contract is written, I'm supposed to recommend to the board the, the selected calendar from the committee. It does not say in the contract that the board has to approve the recommended calendar. You, you set the work calendar for the year. So, this, this is not next coming school year. We have a whole year, but we try to get it approved as quickly as possible, so.
And I will say that I did search for the wrong Good Friday, so that does alleviate some of my concern.
I'm not trying to sway you on that.
I know you're not, but I, I'm not an adamant no because to me, that extra day on spring break didn't make no sense. Not a fan of the week at Thanksgiving, but I don't know that it's enough for me to say a no at this point. I, I do think we need to be leaner. I don't like the idea of building in vacations to a school calendar, which I feel like we're building in vacations to a school calendar. I'm just not a fan of that.
Well, everyone's point is excellent. I mean, it just does keep moving earlier and earlier. I mean, being a Gen X kid, if the school would have told my parents that I was going to be home for two weeks when I was in sixth grade.
I'm the truant officer who has your house all the time.
I mean, our parents didn't love us enough to even take us on spring break, and that wasn't something we did back in the day, and so I guess that's a problem.
I will probably change my vote here, but to be heard, I don't like this for next time.
I will, I, your point is taken, and we can make recommendations, we can have that, and if somebody from the board would like to sit on the calendar committee for those discussions, then you're welcome. I will invite you to the discussion, that's fine.
I will go. I, I have no problem being the old fuddy-duddy in the room.
I'm so used to that by now, right?
Well, I am anyway. Okay. Item C is two overnight out-of-state trips, one for.
Quick clarification. There was no motion to separate?
No.
We're not going to separate. Is that correct, Mr. Lane?
Yeah, because again, if I typed in the right year when I searched Good Friday, I would have been okay with that Friday before spring break.
Expect nothing less of you. Is the cross-country meet and a girls' lacrosse tournament is, is item C. Any more questions or comments about items A through C in Section Ten? Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section eleven, personnel consent items. I'm looking for a motion to approve personnel items A through O. There's quite a few of them.
A through N?
I had A through O.
N. N?
Yeah.
May I have a change or something?
I'm using, I printed mine this morning.
May I have a change?
Okay. So, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve personnel consent items A through N.
So moved. Second.
Excellent. I, I need to grab that. The new copy.
Do you want?
I've got, I've got one. I just, I printed this one yesterday. Okay, I will read them all through. Item A is three resignations. B is employment, pending acceptable BCI/FBI background checks. C is supplementals for the district, the high school, and the junior high. D is our board resolution for the employment of non-licensed coaches. E is a list of supplemental volunteer coaches. F is five change of status. G is an attached list of volunteers pending their acceptable BCI/FBI background check. H is three leaves of absence and unpaid days. I is a list of stipends for the music department. J is a list of game workers for this school year. K is building substitutes and academic tutors. L is transportation and substitute employment. And there's section one, two, and three. There's substitute drivers, classified substitute drivers, and trainees.
Can I stop you there real quick?
Yep.
So, L, are these all new hires?
No. So, these are people who have, the, the substitute drivers, one, are current employees that have other roles within the district, so then they volun, they sign up to be substitutes so they can be paid, they can drive a bus as a substitute. The classified substitute drivers, I believe that those are people that annually, this is the annual list of substitute drivers, some of them may be new, but this is.
So, we do these every year?
We do this every year, yeah. So, what we're doing here is anybody who, we've asked them to send in their intention to be considered as a substitute again at the end of the school year. So, for a lot of these things, right, building substitutes and academic tutors, those are people that are, you know, at-well employees that are saying they'd like to be considered again. So, now, the ones that are subclassified trainee, things like that, some of those may be new trainees for bus drivers and things. I know that some of those people on that list were going through the process to become bus drivers, so that's my guess there is.
Looks like a lot of familiar names to me.
Yeah, I think the other ones are people that we've had.
Yep.
So, okay.
That was I, or L. M is a list of interpreter services.
So, we have a list of people that we have contracted with if we need to use them as an interpreter for families for either official meetings or enrollment processes that we have a regular list that we pull from usually.
And N is one stipend.
And that's for last year's stipend?
Yes. Must have been missed on the list. Karen shaking her head, yes. So, in order for us to pay it, we have to approve her.
Any questions about A through N? My apologies, I was, I printed my J and D yesterday, so. All right. Hearing no comments or questions, Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Section twelve, I'm looking for a motion to open up our la, our section of other business.
So moved.
Second.
And we will have to vote on these each individually. A is amendment to the community reinvestment area agreement. It is recommended to approve amendment number three to the community reinvestment area agreement dated five-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and waive the forty-five-day review under RC sections seven-three, three-five-point-six-seven-one, and five-seven-zero-nine-point-eight-three. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Severs? Or Ms.?
Do you have it?
Yeah, so I have, if anyone wants the full packet, I can give you the packet, but basically, what we are told is that the, the CRA, the economic development parcel here is one large parcel, and they are having tenants come in, in that entire parcel, so they're trying to parse it out by the tenant space so that they can actively say to pick a company, ABC Warehouse, that you have this portion of the responsibility to meet the economic development agreement.
This is for payroll only. So, the property we're talking about here is, are the shipping warehouses down beyond, on Union Road, behind the casino and the racetrack. That's in our school district. It was old property that was owned by the state penitentiary. There was a community redevelopment agreement, CRA, I think that's what it stands for, and that CRA came with payroll expectations for the developer. So, currently, there are no tenants in the, in the facility that was built. They're just trying to get the tenants in there. But as those tenants come on, they want to know, are they fully responsible for the payroll requirements of it, or am I only paying a portion because I'm only renting out a portion of the facility? So, this was an oversight, according to the Port Authority and Warren County Development Offices, when they had, that they're, they're seeking some clarification on behalf of the tenant. They did not meet their payroll requirements for the first year of operations, and so they have to pay a fine to the county. If it continues and they don't meet it, then they would lose their tax-free, not tax-free, but their tax exemption portion that they get. So, we're not losing anything on this. We don't collect income taxes right now from that anyway, but they need our approval. So, this is on the payroll side of it only, and it's splitting the payroll responsibilities by building, basically. So, we asked because we knew you were going to ask, and we had a special meeting instead of just putting this on the agenda. So we're not losing anything on this. We don't collect income taxes right now from that anyway. But they need our approval. So this is on the payroll side of it only, and it's splitting the payroll responsibilities by building, basically. We asked, cuz we knew you were gonna ask, and we had a special meeting instead of just putting this on the agenda. So we didn't want to be snowed over on this one.
All right. Any other questions on A? Ms. Irvin, roll please.
You have to do a different motion, right?
I took the first motion as item 12A.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Again, in other business, I need a motion to open discussion on item B, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and that's to approve a transfer advance in the Lebanon High School and the Lebanon Junior High Athletic Funds.
Okay, so last month, we, we told you, we gave you a heads-up that this was happening. Both of these funds showed, ended the year with a deficit balance. So we did it in advance to make those positive. Our general fund could cover it. I've since advanced those back. So now I'm bringing to the board a question for you. Do you want to transfer the money, or do you want to advance it? Because they need to start, they need funding for this school year to get the athletics program going. In order to do that, they need to have not a negative cash balance. So in this, I'm gonna need you to actually say, do you want it to say to approve transfer? Or do you want to say to approve advance? So the difference in an approve, transfer versus advance, advance is temporary, transfer is permanent. That's the easy financial side, and then I'm gonna let Isaac speak to some of the things that we have talked about as far as dealing with on a long-term basis, that gets them started for this year. But we also have some, any questions on the financial, what this is asking of you?
Not for me. So a couple of things changed, as you, earlier in the agenda, there was like $20,000, I think, was the amount, or something that was negative. Since, since last board meeting, we received a check from OHSAA, because if you advance to the state tournament, you get some reimbursement for travel expenses and things paid back from OHSAA to the district. And so the actual amount is less than what was transferred last month, or advanced.
Advanced, yes.
Advanced last month. So last month, it was 20,000 something. We received a check from OHSAA. That amount is now down to 13,700, okay? The second portion of this, and I've asked, I met with Keith this morning, Keith Pantling, our athletic director. We've been gathering information about the best way to handle this going forward. And, and I really think what I would like to do, first of all, is I would like to have no more than two board members. But if there's board members that would like to meet with Karen and I and Keith within the next month to look at how other schools are handling their athletic budget, and how we handle our athletic budget, and come up with a system that we think that we can deal with going forward. Because not everybody deals with their athletic budget the same way that we do. What we found out, right, is when, when a family pays a participation fee, that money is going exclusively at this point in time to the general fund, to offset the cost of supplementals and transportation. None of the money that we pay for a participation fee goes to the athletic budget to pay for equipment, officials, any of those things. Our athletic budget is solely funded, except for some money that's given to them for permanent improvements, because we have to buy hurdles and pads and different things. But our athletic budget currently is solely funded from gate revenue, right? Ticket revenue drives the money available to spend on equipment, uniforms, balls, you know, anything. So enroll, attendance at sporting events has gone down some. You know, think about high school football attendance 20 years ago, or basketball attendance, you know, just not, not everybody's going to those anymore. We've raised the ticket prices through the ECC about as far as anybody wants them to be raised and more. They're already catching flak for the cost of ticket prices, so as a conference, we're not looking to do anything with that. And it's really the big change in expenses this year, and Karen and I would, I would like to say publicly. I think Keith Pantling is doing a really good job of budgeting and accounting for our athletic budget. I asked him for some information today, like what's going on, what trends are we seeing? This year, from 2021, when he arrived here, to 2025, we have seen an $18,000 annual increase in officials' costs alone. So this past year, we've, we're spending $18,000 more on game referees and umpires and officials than we were spending four years ago. Some of that is, they've unionized a little bit. For example, boys' lacrosse, there's one boys' lacrosse umpire association in the state of Ohio, and this year, they held out, and they demanded like doubling the fee. Well, everybody sort of caved a little bit. We didn't, they didn't double the fee. But had they not given the increase that was, some of the increase that was requested, then there would've been no, not a single referee for boys' lacrosse in the state of Ohio this year. So some of that is intentional, you know, negotiation on behalf of officials. But an $18,000 increase in the last four years on game officials alone, that accounts for $58,000 of athletic expenditures, is officials alone annually. So my recommendation, Isaac Severs' recommendation, based off of what I know, is if you advance this, this is gonna be a never-ending cycle of advancements until we find some other way to fund the, to, to, to put money into the fund. If you transfer, then you're gonna transfer now, or you're gonna advance at the end of the year? Cuz it's not, the model is not sustainable. Is that fair?
Yeah, and we've had years since Isaac and I, and I have been here, we've been talking about this. So we have a lot of things that we've talked, even some things we've talked with the board about, just different ideas. But at the end of the day, I would echo, we need to have a group, and whether it's with you or without you, just administratively, to look at, what does this look like, and how can we fix this? We have to do something.
So for example, Forest Hills, which is Turpin and Anderson, $175 for participation fees, and all $175 of it goes to the athletic budget. None of it goes to the general fund.
The general fund covers all the supplementals.
And so general fund covers all the supplementals. So for example, for Lebanon last year, we collected, according to Karen's numbers here, we collected $182,000 in high school participation fees last year. But we spent $375,000 in supplementals. We collected $56,000 in supplemental, in, in participation fees from junior high, but we spent $115,000 on supplementals. And so it's not covering the cost of the supplementals. But that's, that was the reason that participation fees went into effect with the district to begin with. We are also on the high end of what places in our conference are charging. We are one of the highest.
And the boosters provide $30,000 a year in additional funds to cover things that-
Yeah, to, to cover expenses. So, so it is, the, the model that we currently have, I do not believe is sustainable, because I, I'm not gonna recommend raising ticket prices, because the people that are coming to watch athletic events are family members. They're already paying for their kid to play. I would like to find some way, as a district, that we can, you know, use a portion of the fees that are being collected to go offset these costs. The cost is just going up, right? Everything's going up.
So my thoughts on this, and no one has to agree with me here, but I think we need to figure out what that looks like before we transfer it. So, but we could do an advance now and change that to a transfer later, once we come up with what that looks like.
Yes.
Cuz if we do a transfer now, that's setting a precedence for the future. But if we do as an advance now, and we figure out what this looks like, then we can go back and change that. Or transfer it back and, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Pay back the advance and then transfer it permanently. I'd much rather see this be an advance until that is decided, what that looks like. That's my opinion.
I would also like to volunteer. I'd be glad to help with that committee, if you'd like. Kind of upset that I volunteered for the calendar committee now.
Is it, is it a matter of, is it a matter that the budget will never kind of equal? And so like, the, the cost of running these teams and things is much higher than what we bring in? And so we need to figure out, like-
It is.
How we can reduce or kind of optimize?
We're cutting it close every single year. And when, when we first got here, coming out of COVID, because we couldn't have things, the deficit was 200 and something thousand, because, cuz nobody was allowed to come. So I mean, that's a pretty good picture of, that's, that's the way you generate revenue, is through ticket sales. I, I just don't, I don't see it happening. We are also, I mean, and some of it's not even attributed to our spectators not coming, but there are some, we are counting on Friday night football games covering the budget for every other athletic program that we offer, for the most part. Boys' basketball and boys' football, cuz there's, most sports we don't even charge admission to, right? And so because they're in the field behind the high school or whatever, you know, like, you, you, there's no way to, to traffic that. So, but we had two football games this year where the visiting team brought very few people. You know, and that's where you're counting on, you're counting on some of that, that revenue. So it is, I, I, I wanna reiterate, I do not believe that this is mismanagement or poor planning or bad accounting on behalf of our athletic department. It's just the reality, it's just the reality of how this fund is created. And others, others got to this point sooner than we did in terms of making changes, which is, which is kind of evident with, you know, what's, what's happening with some of the other places around us. So there are some options that we think that we could consider, but really, we wanna have a better discussion. Include the athletic director, include Mr. Dalton, Karen, myself. And so I, it's not my job to say whether it's a transfer or advance. I just know that I don't think it's going to improve, based off of the current system, so.
We also do not get paid anything for hosting a home football playoff game.
We hosted two home football playoff games, and we got $0 of the ticket sales.
Ticket sales, and I think that might be- Well, the first one we got, not the second.
Second one, because we just decided that we didn't-
There was another event at school, so there was no way to tell who was for the football game.
We get reimbursed for actual expenses that we have in terms of, we're paying people to take tickets or to announce the games or whatever. They will reimburse that cost, but they do not pay. We, we don't get any ticket prices for those sales.
I'd be happy to participate in that too, but if you wanna do it.
I'm, I'm actually pretty happy with the calendar committee.
I'll write that down.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with Mr. Lane. I, I think $12,000 in how much of a budget they're working with, I think it, I mean, we're gonna fix it. I think we just transfer it and go on. That's just my opinion. I don't know how that does for a vote, but I'm okay with transferring it, so.
So at the end of the day, I need a motion of what you want it to say, and then a second, and then a vote.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to approve the transfer into the LA Lebanon High School and Junior High Athletic Fund, and then we'll vote.
And if you don't want a transfer, you can vote no.
You vote no, and then I'll-
We can discuss after that, right? After the motion, we can discuss.
Yeah, if it votes no, then we know it's gonna be an advance, right?
Or they could both be no, theoretically.
Thank you for that, so. Nothing gets past you.
I, I do think, and I'm gonna go back to some Robert, I do believe that if there's a difference of opinions, that the best way to handle it would be to make a recommendation, to have a second. And if you do not want it to be a transfer, to vote no, if you'd rather have it be an advance, if that's the motion that's on the table. And then somebody else could make a motion for the advance.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So I need that first motion, whatever it is.
I need a motion to approve a transfer into the LHS and Lebanon Junior High High School Athletic Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let me take a-
But if, but we're opening that up for discussion, right? So if, so if we decide, if the committee decides, hey, we're gonna recommend 20,000, then later on, you're gonna move over a weird $7,932.87. I've just thrown out a number. I'm not saying 20,000's the answer, but, or if you do an advance, then you move over the whole 20 later, after you-
You do the difference.
Yeah.
Well, the committee is really looking into the future, right?
Correct. We hope that future's not gonna be at the end of the school year. We hope that future is within the next three to four months.
If you did an advance, it would just be literally these dollar values. If you do a transfer, it's literally these dollar values. To, to fix the problem today, the committee can come back and say, I wanted another amount, but what, what I have to do is fix these two-dollar values. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, yeah. So until we have something in place, I just don't like setting a precedence upfront. I fully support whichever one we decide, something's gotta happen, or I support it. I just, I think a transfer says, this is it, we're gonna, next year, and they come back and say, well, you haven't decided anything, you need to transfer again.
I, I think it would be fair for me to say that Karen echoed the same concern today while I was in her office.
Sure.
So, so setting a precedent would be a concern for her. She didn't say it out loud, but I'm gonna say it for her.
Well, and, and to expand, it's not just, setting a precedent is not just in this situation. It's what do I have to say to everyone who comes into this situation, right?
Other, other clubs and other, yeah, okay.
So it sounds more appropriate to advance versus transfer.
I will say it's completely up to you how we do this, right? I'm not gonna, I, I, I do have an opinion, yes, but also there's an issue here that we just need to fix.
Need to fix, yeah.
Right? And so like, I'll be honest, it's easier for me if you do a transfer, cuz then I can just, it's done and gone, and we move on.
It, it doesn't make sense to me to, to do an advance and then two months later, do a transfer, you know, it's-
Well, then I-
I mean, we're gonna do it, it's just whether we're gonna do it this week or in eight weeks and-
But it might just provide extra accountability and some, just due diligence to make sure that we have you, everything in order, that we've optimized, whatever we need to, to try to bring the numbers closer together.
Yeah, I think if it's an advance, it's more incentive to fix it.
To fix.
Than just know that we're just gonna keep giving them money and transferring it.
So I think we're ready for roll. I know how I'm voting, so.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is a motion to approve a-
Transfer.
Okay, okay, roll call. Mr. Gliotti?
No.
Mr. Lane?
No.
Mrs. Dalton?
No.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
No.
Okay, motion fails, so now I, I need a motion-
Motion to advance into the LHS, okay.
Second.
Ms. Irvin, roll please.
So is, is that it to be a C or on the agenda?
No, we still have, so-
That's my question, right?
Yeah, motion one is still in play, but this, this says, so that's actually a really great question, cuz this is, this becomes your motion one. So you're not actually saying yes or no to the advance, you're saying, is this the motion that we're going to talk about?
Gotcha, okay.
We're making a motion.
We're, you're changing the language with this motion.
Yes.
To approve the advance.
Gotcha.
Correct. Okay.
And that's been moved to seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, yes, Mr. Gliotti first, Mrs. Coke second.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so I wanna make sure I get these right. Okay, okay, so the motion to change the language, let's do, we've got Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried. Okay, so now we're back to motion one.
Which is voting to approve it.
Voting to approve a, sorry, an advance. Of these balances, okay.
One motion to change the language, one motion to approve. One motion to change the language, one motion to approve.
Yes. So that one is already on the floor, so I just need a roll call. Are we ready for the roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried. We're done.
Section, thank goodness. I was pretty dug in on that one, that's like my Advil moment.
We all support the sports for sure, and the clubs.
So board comments is our last section. Mr. Lane, did you have anything you needed to add?
I don't think so.
Ms. Dalton?
No.
Mr. Gliotti, two minutes or less?
Okay, yes. I would like to reassure the visitors here, the public, that in, in the last year, it's been my pleasure and honor to serve on this board, and I can assure everyone that issues are investigated as appropriate, and appropriate actions are taken, and they're not always public, because they involve children, and they cannot always be public. And I also would like to assure the public that the safety of everyone, including our faculty, staff, students, and the community, is amongst our highest priorities. I just wanted to get that out there. Two minutes or less.
Well, so.
I have nothing.
Mr. Gliotti, could you just speak on what's in front of us, since you were?
I would love to share that the, our, our corporate partners and friends from Sintas made these wonderful mats that are personalized, celebrating our 2025 Ohio softball state champions. We have three of them, one right here, one that was given to the coach, which I think is in the press box right now, and another one that is headed over to the high school. So thank you very much to Sintas for this very generous gift.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Section 14, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Irvin, roll please.
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.